I've got nine o'clock, we call the meeting orders. We'll start with questions. Any conflict of interest declarations? Standing on approval of agenda was adding Tom Grebman. To it, that's beginning, so.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Standing on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passed, approval minutes. Second, have a motion and a second, further discussion? Standing on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Those are for those who do not specifically appear on the agenda.
Mr. Garrett, can you come to the mic?
Yeah, please.
Good morning. I'm Bill Sharma, if you don't know me, I serve in the legislature District Seventeen. I'm a House Representative for this area. I live in Dakota Dunes, I have a wife, three grown daughters and ten grandchildren. And I've got a business over in Springfield, South Dakota, manufacturing company. I just came this morning to see if. Are any issues that you anticipate meeting help on upcoming legislative session? We're ways away yet, it doesn't start until January fourteenth, but. Or if you have any that come up, feel free to reach out to me. I, I'll run things to ground as far as I can, deal with other legislators as necessary. I'll reach out to the governor's office if necessary and so on. If you have any questions about of me today that you'd like me to answer. Present pass the other day or the special session, it was a close call. But we got it passed and that's going to be moving forward. That's the biggest accomplishment this summer. In the fall, I mean, in the winter, we're going to be doing the. AI and maybe the data centers that are made that's on the team proposed by Toronto and. There may be more of them coming depending on community acceptance and and improving. Yeah, we're pretty well between North Dakota now that's rebuilt. The fourth one underway, the surrounding states of Iowa, the best also have them. Draw the, the challenge for us is none of those states charge sales tax. I'm really quick, I'm going to get it. If you're, if you're the manufacturer, just like I am, anytime I buy this equipment. Just get sale tax on that these we go to state of South Dakota. They know the rise of South Dakota. They're pushing back on that saying that that's just the reason we're not going to be able to go through. Unless you do something, so lots of discussion about that. It creates job and it creates trouble. They're not trying to avoid the. Kind of kind of that size tax, your property taxes or income tax, I mean, we don't need that. Any other kinds of taxes that might apply to the business, they're not, they're not actually. Wouldn't be for ongoing purchases on a daily basis either. It would just be for that initial equipment and then replacement for some of that. So, but other than that, I've got, you know, just thank you very much for the work that you do. You know, it often goes kind of unnoticed, sometimes it's all right to people on the radar, right? But, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this when you're looking at. Information and trying to make decisions and talking constituents about. You know, what their opinions are, or are they talking to you about what their opinions are? And I, I appreciate the effort, I know it doesn't. It isn't an easy job. And so I appreciate you letting me come up and speak this morning, thank you very much for your time. And we'll call it a day, thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors? Standing on. You can either stay or say. So Tom is with Colliers, for anybody who doesn't know, they're the ones that help us with the bond for the law enforcement center.
I know where to find you.
So yeah, Tom Grebman, yeah, I just, I don't know where, where. I was asked to come down and talk about what to do with the extra money, I don't know, do we have a number yet for? For nothing yet?
We don't, not till final build comes in.
Okay, so the final build comes in, alright, so usually when something like this, especially. When it's kind of a sizable, a sizable number, what, what you can do is what they call a. Cash, a cash defeasance of some of the bonds. And what we do then is we put the money into a, into the bank, into the, in an escrow. In a trust, and then that way that money pays the bonds, pays the interest on those refunding bonds. I shouldn't say refunding bonds, those, those defeased bonds until they're callable, they're not going to be callable until. I think twenty thirty. Thirty-two, I think is when they're callable. What, so what, what term that you used, that was a defeasement? Did I get that right? Thirty-one, defeasement, yes. Yep. So I don't know if anybody's an accountant here, but that's a, that's a legal term, so by, by legally defeating the bonds, then you're. Actually reducing the amount of debt outstanding, so the day you defees them, let's just, let's just say. You know, say you got seven million dollars out there and you defees seven million dollars worth of bonds. Then the size of the bond issue will decrease by that amount. And then whatever interest you can draw on that seven million dollars in the escrow, and right now it's not too bad, it's about. It's about the same, same rates as the bonds, so, so you really don't lose a lot by putting the money away. I think that's, that's probably the best way to do it, because then it, then it reduces your, your, your debt by that amount. And then, and then at the call date, you can actually refund those bonds and they truly come off your books. And once you defees them, it becomes a kind of a footnote on your books that they've been defeated. That's a portion of those twenty twenty-three bonds for fees.
So. How this works is the first ten years of the bond you cannot pay early. That's why we have to, if there's money left, we have to sit on it, we just can't put it back towards, towards the bonds today.
Right, and.
So that'd be twenty, thirty-three, and twenty, thirty, well, probably January twenty thirty-two?
Thirty, actually, I'm just looking at this. And it looks like they're, it's like they're calling twelve, twelve-one and thirty-one, so I think I must have got eight, eight columns. Yeah. Twelve-one and thirty-one. So, so that's. That's one way, the other way, you really can't, you know, the federal government, because these are tax exempt bonds, federal government doesn't really want you to make any money, right? So you issued more than five million dollars worth of bonds, which is kind of the, that's. That's what they call the small issuer exemption, so anything over five million dollars, if you earn more interest on that, that money needs to. Be rebated back to the federal government, so even if you just sit on the money and you don't defees them, you leave them out, leave the principal outstanding where it's at, and then just. Hold it in the bank and then on the call date, use the interest of the money you made for that, you really are no, no better off. And you can't use the money anyplace else because of the way the resolution was, was passed, I mean, the bond issue was passed. It's specific to that site, it really is, so. Really any questions, I guess?
Well, would we do this through self-put fit?
No, you would, you would do it through. I mean, we would, we would work with you on it. We charge a nominal, give a couple thousand dollars just to be engaged, I guess, we'd have to be engaged, you would do it. The bond council, we'd have to be involved, you'd have to pass a resolution to do that, to say, hey, we wanted to defees the bonds. You know, again, I didn't know exactly what I had, but this is, this is kind of an example of what it would be like.
So Tom, is there reporting requirements after we defees it, like there is right now?
Yes, there would be, there, I mean, you still have the reporting requirements on the original, there'd still be reporting requirements on the original. Bond issue, but not on, not on these. So basically, you know, there's a lot of information there because it spits out a bunch of reports, but. You know, if you did this, you know, you had, say you had seven million dollars and you could invest in, that's just the number I, I got, I don't know if I got that originally from. From Tegra or not, but that was kind of a number that was thrown around a few months ago. So that first page there shows, basically, if you did something like this, you could save about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. Up until the call dates, and you can see all the way down if you're looking at page one, so it's three twenty-eight annually. I just reran these yesterday based on this dollar amount, so this is very current. The, the bottom number there highlighted in yellow said net present value, so after you tracked out, it looks like you have great savings, if you look at the savings column, fifteen million there. If you're putting seven into it, so if you look down below, it's do the present value analysis, it saves you about seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars. And then what happens? So let's see, let's go to the. The page three and four basically is the escrow that's built, I built this on current rates that are out there in the market. So that, it's kind of a wash, you can see on page three, if you look in the middle of the page where it says actual positive or negative arbitrage. Because the interest rate on the bond is a little bit higher than the interest rate that you can get in your escrow, you'll lose about fifty-eight thousand dollars, which really is a big number by a couple. Maybe a couple cop cars, but it's, it's a big one cop car, so it's gonna be, maybe only half a cop, I don't, anyway. You know, it's, it's nominal to a certain extent, so I mean, really, if, if this is the safest way, I guess, to do something like this, is to. Put it away, the nice thing is, again, because it's a technical, what they call a technical defeasance of the bond is, you're not doing the whole thing, but you're doing a piece of it. Then your bond then decreases, you can look over here on the final page, you can see. Because of the escrow and everything like that, you're going to basically get away with seven million dollars based on ratios today, based on the interest ratio you can invest at. You're going to defeat about six million five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in bonds. So that would come off of the balance of the bonds that are outstanding. I wish I had another sheet, there should have been another sheet that printed on this for different, it shows what the balance of the box would be. So it'd be the, what's currently outstanding minus half, and that would be what's your outstanding, your outstanding bond debt. Would be, and usually the public likes to see that, you know, if you're paying off debt. Then you can show that you paid off debt, if you're just holding the cash and, and holding the interest, then, and, and you can't use the interest that it earns on anything else, even. Because the interest is from the bond issue, and the bond issue is, you know, dedicated for building the project, right? So, so even if you held the cash, I mentioned this earlier, you can't use that interest to do other things on this facility or anything like that. So that, that has to go with it. Well, that project's done, right, so that interest has just got to sit, and anything over the bond yield has to be rebated back to the debts. So you really don't gain anything, and then you don't, it's not the fees, the full amount of the bond issue is still outstanding, even though you've got, say, seven million dollars in the bank. That's not seen as being the fees, so the full amount of the bond issue is still outstanding, so and then, the nice thing about this is. It, it sets it up, some council can't come in or commission come in later and change it, right? They can't, this is set up, say, say, you guys decide, hey, this is a great idea, we'll just hold the money and we'll just use the interest that we earn on it to, just like we're doing here, the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, we'll earn interest on it. And we'll just pay debt service with that and offset the debt service, well, you know, another commission might come in in seven, eight years. Or five or six years and do something different and change that intent, so this one kind of locks in the intent, that would be the intent of the commission, so. Can't go backwards, once it's in there, it's in.
So, so the, you know, most of the presentation on this seems to point towards this being like the only sensible option, but then kind of the end there, you apply that maybe a different commission might consider something else desirable, like. But, but we're pretty hemmed in by federal laws on how this money can be used or anything like that, so like, can you imagine a different scenario that a future commission might prefer to use?
Well, I mean, you could, you know, somebody came in, you know, after Andy retired or something like that, and they decide that, you know, fighters down the road, hey, they want something more out there on that site, I guess you could say. He said, let me build something out there on that site, any interest that's earned on that. But, you know, after five years, you're supposed to start using the cash that you had left over to start paying principal and interest on this also, so in essence, you're doing what we're doing here. Except it doesn't defeat the bonds, it doesn't reduce your overall debt, which, again, usually the public likes to see that, if not, nobody's paying attention, it maybe doesn't matter, but. But usually that's by doing the technical defeasance, defeasance of the bonds, the actual debt on your books actually gets reduced by that amount. So there is, I mean, there's two ways to do this, right, you're listening, there, there's the defeasance, and then there's just hold the money until, you know, it's callable, stick it in the bank and earn some interest on it, you can't use it for anything. Except on that site, and. You know, that's, that's kind of, yeah, after five years, you have to use their, use the principal, not the interest necessarily, but the principal that was left outstanding, so the original seven million, to start paying debt service, so in essence, that's kind of what we're doing here. But anyway, this.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I've done a couple of these, you know, where they come in under budget, which is really nice, because, you know, all the time you come in over budget and you gotta find a way, find a million dollars here and there, but. But here, you know, you're, you're under budget, which is great, and that's what we've done, we've done some cash defeasance, just to cover that debt, debt requirement.
So Travis, you've been the point person on, on building projects, and so was this ballpark, you.
I couldn't tell, honestly, couldn't tell.
Alright, because it's, it's better than what I was anticipating. Yeah, oh.
I think Kerry has an opinion, I have an opinion.
Yeah, don't, alright, don't, don't use my numbers, those were numbers from eight, nine months ago. Eight, nine months ago, you know, and, you know, I don't know, you probably have some change orders or something like that, I don't know, I didn't call Tegra yesterday to get a better number.
So it'll be roughly first November, got to the first April watch.
Alright.
Okay, I was going to be next question. The number of those final bills coming in, then we know.
Um, and that was just a scenario that was run, kind of a ballpark number, you know, between six to seven, I picked seven, and like I said, I ran these initially eight, nine months ago, and then I just updated them last year.
Do we have further questions about, does the city desire to pay their portion early or anything like that, or is that?
No, that has nothing to do with the bond, the bond money.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we asked, or asked a question.
Well, we get the final number, that Tom, Tom, he probably got my. Immigration, immigration nation scheduled for the city. And then they end up paying.
Yes.
And then that'll be part of the contract that, or the agreement that Michael's been working on, that'll be.
Gotcha.
That'll be part of that.
And really, what they need to do is part of that, part of that deal is they, they're, they're leasing the facility. And again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm definitely not an expert in leasing, but the one thing that's key there is, is, I wouldn't, I shouldn't say we wouldn't allow. I don't want to sound bad, but I mean, they're leasing a facility as service, so it should be like if you're renting, you can't prepay your rent, you know, for twenty years out on day one, right? You just pay your rent on a monthly basis, so if you're renting an apartment somewhere, you're not prepaying that. You don't get an advantage by keeping, because you need that cash flow for the remainder of the bond, now, if you refinance things and that cash flow, or, you know, say. You know, when it's callable or, or later on, you know, interest rates become more favorable somehow. You know, then, then the city should reap the benefit of that savings, that annual savings from refinancing. But as far as what their lease requirement is, that should be set, and there shouldn't be, I mean, prepayment, you know, like I said, it's like a rent. It shouldn't be an annual amount, that way you can offset and issue debt service.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the way those payments get worked, it's amateurized over twenty-six years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, what it does is, it, not really, I mean, the last page on there, it shows that, you know, I mean, it pays off in thirty-one. So you'll earn interest until thirty-one on the escrow and then.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the bond.
The original bond issue.
And how long the city's going to pay.
Oh, 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 I got you.
Till the length of the bond, I think twenty fifty-two is the end of, is our last payment, so.
Yeah, and then if you do this, then in reality, it's, it actually shortens up, I mean, your, your last full payment is, is December forty-nine. That's the amount of money we have, because again, we're defeating those last, those last three payments.
Any other questions?
Everybody in here? Well, again, the process would be, you know, it's just that you'd have to have a resolution, we talked to Larry Henry, you have a resolution. This is how you want to proceed, no one doing, like I said, you can just hold on to the cash and, and like I said, in five years, though, you're supposed to start using the cash to pay debt service. So, but, but you can hold on to the cash. Those are really in my mind, your only two options. If you talk to bond councils.
Derekson Solutions, are they here?
Yep.
Morning, commissioners. Jeff Erickson, Harrison Solutions Group, we have the IT of the county. Here today to talk a little bit about adding a layer of protection to your systems, it's a good time to do so with the, your public safety building going in, but also. Just in general, it's something we've been looking at with Kerry for the last year or two, and it's, it's gotten to the point where. It's now a layer of security that we definitely recommend to our clients, that layer is what's called EDR, that's endpoint detection and response. For the software itself, it sort of sits a little bit above, say, your antivirus on your computer. The way I like to describe it is, you think about your antivirus, it's going to scan files when you open them or download them, right? So let's say you go out to the web and you're going to get a printer driver from HP, you go up to HP's website, you download the file, your antivirus is going to check that file when you download it. And it'll say, yeah, oh, that's a legitimate driver file, and go ahead and install that. Well, what EDR does, the endpoint detection and response, endpoint means it's installed on all your systems, detection means it's going to try and detect. What that file does, how it behaves, and then response is that it can do some response to that, right? It can automatically prevent it from doing something malicious, it can alert us that something weird is happening. So again, using that same scenario, you download printer driver that you think is from HP and you install it on your computer, and maybe for the first few weeks, that printer driver seems to be fine. But after a few weeks, instead of connecting to HP to get updates and try and do things, it starts connecting to a site in Russia, and it starts downloading something or running some scripts. That's what EDR does, it, it picks up the behavior rather than just something that hasn't happened, it's taking for the behavior of that file, that. Application, that script, so when it detects that, again, that's the detection part, right, it sees a behavior that it doesn't like. It's going to do a couple of things, one is it's going to see if it can gather more information about that, log what's happening. Second, it's going to see if it's malicious, if it thinks it's malicious, it's going to try and stop it, and third, it's going to send an alert to us as your IT company. To say, hey, this person on this system has something going on, you need to jump in, and oh, by the way, here's the logs we took of when it happened, here's what we tried to do to stop it. So this type of software is becoming, again, much more. Required, you know, it used to be, I guess, optional on a lot of systems, now it's, it's becoming more of a requirement. Again, it sits alongside your antivirus, so it is an added cost, it's not something that replaces something else, it's something that goes in addition as an additional layer of security. But definitely something that we recommend that come looking at, and that's what brought us here today, was to talk just a little bit about why that is. And then cost-wise, really not too bad of a cost, it's four dollars per system per month. Now, you do have about a hundred and twenty systems, right, so you do the math, now you're talking about, you know, about six grand a year or so in that ballpark. But the alternative to that is, it doesn't take very long to have even one system compromised, that spreads to multiple others. I think Kerry maybe shared with you some articles, we had sent recently, one of which was also a video from New Orleans, which recently had some problems with their sheriff's department. That situation was, again, a, a file that somebody downloaded, opened, started to fill out some information, it realized it was malicious, it spread to their systems quite quickly. And I, I don't really like to put results the last week or so, but they've been dealing with that the entire month, some of their systems were locked out and they had ransomware. In many places on their network, so you can imagine that kind of disruption for the county. We don't want to have that happen, so again, this is something that cyber insurance also has started to now require, it used to be optional, you used to have a little checkbox on your cyber insurance that said. Do you have antivirus, yes, do you have endpoint detections, you know, maybe it's optional, but now if you don't check yes to that, the cyber insurance folks get a little bit more. Educated about that, and they want to know why you don't have it, so again, it's, it's something where it feels like it's a good time to do it, especially with new systems coming in over the public safety building. It would be something that we would be easily able to deploy as we're deploying those new systems, and then go back through the courthouse to get it on all of the courthouse systems as well, just like today, you have antivirus and. Some other software from us that provides some trip wires, that's on all of your systems as well, so it's a very. Easy thing to deploy, since again, we already have that footprint in your environment, and then we can make sure we touch all the systems and do a protest. Any questions about that? That's a fun topic.
It's a little literally locked if you try to grab something that you shouldn't.
Right, exactly, it, it, what it uses, and this is the only time I'm going to mention, AI, AI in the cloud, it sends the patterns to the cloud, and then the cloud decides. This looks like a normal PDF, or wait, this is not what a normal PDF does, right, so I'm going to try and stop that. There is a chance you might get a false positive, right, where it, it sees you doing something, maybe you get a document from here and you're trying to fill it out, and it said, wait a minute, something looks a little weird, stops that. But we'd rather have that than the alternative, so, yeah, but it, it will actually step in, that's part of the response, that's part of the reason we, we use this particular tool set for EDR. It didn't really know what the other tools have, but also it can do a few of those responses even before we get the alert, though, like, you're still waiting on a human, right? It could be, you know, seven or eight o'clock at night, she's working on something, we wouldn't, it's going to be over tomorrow morning, but the software itself has already tried to block and prevent something from spreading, that's very helpful.
And if we need something released, that's legit, we can contact you.
Exactly, right, exactly, same as you would today, if you were trying to download something and blocked it, this is just another step of that of, okay, now, open the text of behavior and block it. No, this is really legit, or I think this is legit, but again, we can step in and do a manual inspection of it, we'll leave all about that.
Any other thoughts or concerns on that?
I was just going to say that it makes a lot of sense to me, and I think bid threats were evolving really rapidly, and it's getting, or. Something legitimate or not, with a hundred and twenty systems, five or six thousand dollars, seems like a pretty, a pretty reasonable security investment.
We, I think, if we haven't, most of them. Okay, I'll get you. Yep. The region or that. Yeah, I think, actually, yeah, we sent over the inventory with the, the existing, we'll update that now with the new systems going into public safety, we can get a full count and then report back.
Cool. Thank you.
Good morning. Yeah, so I'm just giving an update on that, usually I try to do it a little sooner, but they've switched up their entire system, I saw everything look a little behind. But we did get our chief experience that we did request, we got that amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. And twenty-three cents, so that doesn't come as like a bulk amount, we. Me, through our office, every month I have to request an amount of money based on the amount of work that we've done specifically regarding domestic violence cases. And then if they improve that amount, then they pull that from that entire chunk of sixty thousand, and then they send it to. And then if they improve that amount, then they pull that from that entire chunk of sixty thousand, and then they send it to Kerry. What Kerry does with that, she probably be able to better explain than me, but that's kind of how it works. So it's not just a chunk amount right away, we have to request it, and if we don't, then we lose it. That'll never happen. But that is kind of how that process works for this grant. In past years, we've received roughly anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand, so we've received a significantly higher amount this year. I'm not sure if that's because they requested a higher amount for the first time, or if other people, you know, with everything going on, weren't sure if the funding was going to be there. And so people, my only good that people have kind of backtracked on whether they did apply for the grant, so there was more money to disperse to our smaller counties. That's kind of my understanding of how that worked and why we got this significantly higher amount. So that's really the only update I have right now, we did get it in July, but again, normally they send this really nice letter out saying, congratulations, you've gotten this money. But with their change in their system, we didn't ever receive that letter, and so I just went through and pulled out the contract that we received. Which had all of the information, including the signed documents that I had to sign in order to get the contract, and no, not at all. So, any questions on that one? Appreciate you.
The one that popped to mind for me, so you were previously requesting twenty thirty thousand and always burning through that, so was this fifty thousand request, is that closer to what we invested in this? Or is it still not even, not even your total amount we spent on this?
Um, it's kind of hard to say, we definitely fly through that amount early on, so especially when we get, because we do things quarterly. And so when we get to that third and fourth quarter, we're usually kind of dwindling on our amounts, and so I have to be very careful as to what I'm requesting from them. To continue having amounts through the end of the year, because we're in July through June. With this amount, we should be relatively safe, I would say, with the amount through the whole year. Is mine.
But as is tradition emotionally, you know, America is the same age, we're we do a lot of domestic violence cases. It's been that way, and it's only increasing. So a number of domestic violence related cases that are often works through a lot of time here is going to increase. So it certainly helps offset to some degree, you know, the amount of work, but that's what it's all related to. So we track our time and then funding our time. And we're losing losing our local EBSOS office.
First of July, we don't longer have that, so we've been part of the Wood River City in Camden, but they obviously got no funding issues in front of you. Work with the county that's a little further away for them has been a little bit rough, but they have their own funding as well. We've kind of been in discussions as to what we can do with the community to be part or better with them in that regard, but. New in the talks and for only a couple of months and not having been anything. And then the other thing that I wanted to discuss with you all is the J J R I, which is the Juvenile Justus Reform Incentive. Every year we apply for this, and it's based on the number of successful diversion camps that we've had. This year, we had a total of thirty six in the program and twenty six that were successful in diversion, which is significantly higher than we had previous years. You get seven hundred and fifty dollars for each successful kid. And so we did, through the math, Platte County was approved for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars that we'll receive for those juveniles that were successful. That comes through the state, so we'll just wait for that to come through, but we did receive that after kind of been handling our numbers and figuring out who's successful.
What was the total number, so I got the twenty six successful, was the total number there is?
Thirty six, yes.
Okay, and are some of those still working their way through, or were there ten that were failed?
So there were the number that didn't pass, and then because we run July through June. If it's anything that comes after July of the year, we can't include them. So next year, we have, I think, already about ten to twelve that are currently in the program, and we couldn't include in this fiscal year, but they'll get included for the next year. And so hopefully they're successful.
So the 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 difference between thirty six and twenty six, was that just this previous fiscal year? And there were ten that getting successfully complete?
Yeah.
Okay. Or is it ten still potentially successful?
No, we don't include the ones that are still ongoing, those aren't included as unsuccessful or successful, so those just get put off to the next fiscal year. That's all I have, and if I have any other questions, I'm glad. Have a day, thanks, guys.
Here was a way. No. Now's the time for public hearing, first reading of proposed ordinance for rezoned land located next to Four Hundred and Seventieth and Prairie Drive, property zone A one A. Requesting to rezone the rural residential to put six more homes in the location, legal description, tract three stone for addition. East half, northeast quarter, southeast quarter, twenty four ninety two, pick one, Prairie View Township.
Correct, yeah, so the document I guys, I sent you guys, there's going to be the first page. The blue highlighted box is the proposed rezon. All of it will be rezone rural residential. Right now, there's no ability or abilities for that or or course. I changed it to where the employer is opening up to the rezon. I did go ahead and invite the rest of the Prairie View community to join the rezon, just because it's already more in line with how that community. I think two thousand was when this was done, so that was my. So without being saying, you know, just they get put into a little residential, that's why I asked that they wanted to create, some of them do, some of them don't. But I'm here to. So. Going in. There's some aerials, it's next to the block. So some of the comments and concerns will come from that. But it is, there's a couple of little wet spots from the wetland map. And then going into the peanut, well, I'm obviously on top of the block, so it's not in the actual one.
Talk a little about about those wet spots, that was something I was trying to do a little research on, I'm not super familiar with.
Yeah, so I just. Yeah, so there's more turns points, they're going to be a little more wet than normal ground.
Unidentifiable?
I, you can, you can like level it and then bill on it. So if you get the right permission, you can level it out, and then the wet part, wet points go away and then you.
Is that a federal question? You have to request.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a.
A wetland or something.
Yeah. That's not a, that's not a name.
It doesn't, but the map you're going off of doesn't necessarily even say wetland.
No, it's just, correct, it's just, there's a couple of wetland points.
Me and one A, is that a wetland or? Not necessarily, I mean. There is, the way this sits is ag ground, you'd have to go to N R C S to get it in term of, because those green spots are all over the county. But.
They're not necessarily.
That doesn't necessarily get any. A wet, by definition.
That, yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to.
I just, I'd rather provide more information from all the sources, not enough. Then here's the proposed drainage or piling. You're going to have the six lots here, the smallest one being one point four eight, and then the drainage pond or water collections. And the theater square there, that's not actually like. A tile per section of offer houses, that's where all the water collections on these houses would go, and then get piled. So, and then on the next map, it is going to be. The long line going all the way over, past the Prairie View living area is owned also by the developer, and it's really kind of.
So that's the yellow line on page.
Second to last of the.
So running straight, straight west, four seventy all the way across to.
Yeah, it's over into one of the lines, so, but at the end of the. And provided on the next page with your drawing map. For drainage. They didn't get in contact with water, by electric. They said they can supply water on the residency for the area, and then that there was an agreement made between the developer and her water.
Today, we were just hearing the rezone.
Yeah, just read, yeah, so it's just.
Flat maps in your duty.
Yeah, the proposed. This is lots that are proposed.
Okay, but when I get down to the McFlurry engineering documents in here, these either just the existing class at that location, is that right? Just making sure I get that. What it appears to be, so.
You know, I'm going from agricultural to rural residential. Does change what you build there, obviously agricultural farming, where the rural residential is strictly going to be houses, communities, laws, churches. And a handful of other utility items along this line.
So I'm going to open it up to public comments. And I will start with Adam, if you have anything that you want to add.
Um, I can kind of maybe explain just here. Yeah, I was going to turn under the landlord and the developer. Um, the way this lays out, I'm just using the current. Layout of the land. So that's why we ended up with six lots only, because I'm going to use Prairie View and Four Seventieth for access for those loans, that's it. No roads, no curve, no better. The area that's what I call the retention area for water is currently a very wet area. So naturally, that's where all the water goes, okay? And then on that plat, it should have shown for the tracks one through four. And I know Noah said that that drain tile would go west, it actually shows track four. So that's where it would go if need, I don't believe we're going to need it. Just because it holds water the way it is now, I mean, it's a low enough spot. If we had six, two thousand square foot homes, I don't feel like the amount of water that comes off that's going to be any greater than what's already there, so. That's where we're going to use that area, and if we have to, we have the option to drain it to the west. Other than that, well, what happens to the water when you take it to the west? Um, it would go over the block, relatively, there's a drainage ditch.
Okay.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure where that one goes, that one's not mine, I believe that's the landlord to the north. But down below that block, I believe it's just cattail water storage, it's just a wet area anyway. It always has that.
When it gets far enough south, there's a drainage ditch. Down here. I think it shows on, that's all it does here. That's on blue language, you're like, it looks like at least an acre of a mile from that line where you're going to dump the water.
Potentially, I don't feel like I'm going to have to. I mean, the storage, we're looking at probably five acres there for water storage on nine acres, what was, thousand, so.
Wouldn't it be better to take the water to the ditch?
Consider it, if you were going to do it. Yeah. It makes, it makes me no difference, it was just, I had that access to the west, so I was going to use it, that's the only reason.
You can just go on to the Four Seventieth. Yeah, we send it to the east, send it down the road ditch, so that it gets that blue line.
And I know that road ditch on Four Seventy is the greatest, and it doesn't exist that well. Once it gets to, I don't have the lot's number, but the one point four nine acre lot, that corner right there is very substantial. I mean, there's a pretty good elevation change there, so I mean, it would hold water there. But I don't know how good that coverage crosses Prairie. I haven't looked at it, I don't know any.
Four Seventy, it's just a very deep.
No, it's been farmed out over the years, yeah, that's why I say that southeast corner is pretty good, but it kind of flails out further north.
And correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, but didn't play, going to sit music here on slap.
Correct, yeah, no basis.
Any other questions, Adam? Or anything else you'd like to have?
I don't think so, you know, these, these aren't a hundred percent measured out yet, but when they are, they're going to be roughly this size, okay? Two for acre and a half, maybe two at the most, but it wouldn't be any bigger.
Is it a minimum one acre in rural residential?
But that's also the big change from agricultural to the more than minimum lot size. And also that.
Very nice, thanks, Ken. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Jose Mira, I live on three twenty four, British Street, North of Warren. One concern about this area is water management and flooding. Homes previously built by this developer have had flooding and structural issues, which created serious concerns about whether those same problems could be key here. I urge the commissioners to reconsider these past developments and consider whether this developer has demonstrated reliability and need for a project that would expand rural housing in our county. Resilience should only be if they can be shown that the long term safety and will be.
Anyone else?
suburban and I'm going to rent in on the block, so. Um.
Introduce your address, please.
Okay, four, six, nine, ninety five, Prairie View. So just a couple of things, I don't think any of the neighbors that I talked to are against development or anything like that, because maybe more office area, no problem. And our our biggest concerns are are the water, we don't think that over on Four Seventy, it's very good, so that that will be something noticed. Living there is for you that we need to be addressed to the general. Um, another item is we do get a lot of overwhelming runoff on the block home. Um, I would say all the way across, and not everyone's been a resident, lived there long enough to really have seen this, but we definitely have the right this year. So I think what our plan here seems to be valid as long as we, you know, follow up and make sure that we're really addressing and to make sure what was left on the field and. And protected there, but the other thing I would like to ask is to make sure we have some of the supporting, we think that maybe maybe reconsidering, this is just an idea I have maybe about. Reconfirm speed limit there, because we don't have a lot more people coming there, we, you know, dust issues, we all live in the country, we know what we signed up for, we understand farming, all those things, but it's kind of add to that. So maybe reconsidering the the posted speed limits on Four Seventy, and maybe adding the speed limit sign, and the good systems will self monitor. And so something on that query we draw. And so something on that Prairie View Drive likely just will attract with the families. They want to have some, some people just put that extra little check mark to consider.
That isn't going anywhere.
No, no.
No, so yeah, so that'd be the, if you needed town, if you were going to request speed limit change, I'd tell you township or
Okay.
And then you'll have to figure out, since you live on the border, you'll have to figure out which township is in charge of it. Whether it's Fairview or it's, or Union County, and I don't, I can't think about that township.
That's for Prairie View Drive. There's no speed limit posted there at all right now.
Yeah, but that's a private address.
Oh.
I thought you were talking about.
Although, although I was thinking that maybe township.
So 470, that's going to be the township. Um, the township doesn't maintain Prairie Drive, does it?
Yes, it does. Yeah, it does.
Okay, so township begin.
The more active goal is just to refound the water drain.
So thinking through process here, since they were considering a rezone about whether we primarily whether we consider like this development appropriate in this location. So questions like, um, like specific drainage plans, those are by our ordinance, it's required to be a part of a, of a plat. And a plat would need to occur prior to building, right? So they would need to repath flat this, this, uh, this tract here into the six lots that are proposed. And at that time, um, one of requirements for proving that would be that they demonstrate the drainage issue were being fair appropriate, right?
Correct. And then that's what the reason.
So, but, but at this point, we, we, you know, whether or not there is going to be a retention plan actually isn't something that's formally before us right now, right?
It's, yeah, it's going to be.
Yeah. And so that's something we're in that, yeah, just resolve.
Yeah.
No other issues at this point.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, it's important to know exactly what points you need to, you know, so that, so that you don't walk away thinking, okay, great, they all heard me and this is good. You know, that's something that would need to be decided formally at a later date, right?
Yeah, but if Fairview does maintain Prairie View and 470, the culvert that's in question will be their responsibility to replace and take one.
Okay.
So that will, that would be on the people who already live there or the new developer. So I mean, that's something, if it's already a problem that you have addressed, you know, you might want to get started on that process early. And even if, even if this weren't to pass, I mean, it sounds like it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, I mean, whereabouts is that culvert? Is that?
Right where Prairie View and 470th.
Right, right at that.
Right at that intersection. And it looks like it's probably half full of everything that's ever run through there. So it's probably been an existing issue.
Anybody else? Want to speak?
Yeah, sure.
I'm David Roberts. I live at, uh, of course, I'm I'm on the very end corner of Prairie View. And the only thing that I was, I was talking to a neighbor right across the road. And he's kind of put a swale or a burnum around the backside of his property to divert water from this property from coming up on it is. And, and in the process of that, it dervers water through the road ditch. Then there's a culvert that comes underneath Prairie View by my place between our two properties and that runs across his property without a ditch. That culvert is pretty much shot. So we're talking probably two culverts if we have a lottery. And then I don't know about maintaining how that drains off plus Rem's property in with a ditch. And then, of course, one of the things that I'm a little bit worried about is if we have a lottery, if we put in, we were talking about drain tile. Comes off basically that northwest corner into my property. And then it comes off the road ditch, comes on and then others. So basically I'm buying lower property which I'd like to use. It's now turned into a wet.
It sounds like you would also prefer moving the water over towards 470 and taking it down.
I would, but that's not fair to people that are downhill. I mean, it's the waters. It's gotta go somewhere. What I would like to do is see both those culverts addressed. Because we have, you know, heavy, heavy rain. We got snow on the ground, brown strrows. This guy goes somewhere. Those road dishes. I went talking to Brian. I'm new to the neighborhood. Brian says there's been times where those road dishes are. So. Bring off the water.
But where you're talking to the drainage issues, let's go.
Okay, so this is a current issue now, not because of the development.
No, but the development will add more water, let's be honest. I mean, granted it's a few houses, but we're going to have roads, roads, again, railways. Yeah, we're going to have more water.
And so. But it is a current issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's something Travis says township, we need, we need to check out culverts and get that addressed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. I know.
Mike Wenzel, I live at 31878475. I'm right in that area across the road. And been there for 50 years. You see what Mother Nature does once in a while to us. And my concern is, you know, the water issue and stuff, but also it's a rural area I'm starting with. And to me, that's too many uh, residents, you know, in one spot that they get rid of water and kind of takes away from country. But water is a concern. Like I say, you know, I've seen over the 50 years, so a lot of stuff water flow and everything, so. But that's one of our big concerns.
Where are you at from this development?
Pardon?
Where are you located from this development? Just across the road?
38784.
Okay, right on the south side of Prairie. Um.
It's actually Union County, correct?
Yep.
Just right across the road.
Okay.
Neighbors, yeah. I've helped the neighbor farm that before for a few years. I know what that plan's like, you know? To me, it's a lot of houses were that area, small area, uh, to get rid of water. That's one of my concerns.
Does anybody know if this has been drawn up? Going in?
I would say no.
No.
Just a little window.
I guess I'll take my turn. My name's Rand Wergen. Yes, I'm. 4695 Prairie View Drive, Vanessa Hutton. Uh, we've lived there about seven years and the house, we're, we're the first house that was built. So if you have the plat, we're lots, um, uh, three and four. Three is where my house is located. Four is an empty lot between B and five and six. Brian runs right across the street from us and he would be between that and Adam's development. There's culvert in front of Brian's lot that crosses into my empty lot. Not on heavy rain, ditches back up and that's somebody. That's just a, it is every spring. And so I can't go, I can't get my tractor in there because I'll get my tractor stuck. And so I don't, I don't see that getting any better with the development. When the property, and this is what I'm told, because I was here when this happened in 2001, 2002, when the property was developed as the five lots. Uh, before that, the farmer had burned the, uh, the bank right at the top of the, of the block. So if you go from my house a little bit to the northwest, you look at a little bit to the northwest, there's about a two and a half foot bank to, to level the property. And so I guess. There's only two cuts to drop the water off the block. So one is between my lot four and lot five. And that's that, that west side I just mentioned. The other one's right next to my house. And that's the one I'm very concerned about because on wet days, that thing will take a lot of water. And it's next to my house. So that does cause me some concern on wet, on wet years, wet springs. Um, my sun pump, I'll put a, a manual sun pump, I'll dig a pit in my backyard and I'll pump water off of my backyard. So water, I mean, it's a significant issue for all. So we're very concerned about that. Um, the retention pond is a good news. I'm very excited to hear that Adam wants to put a retention pond. I'm also concerned that, you know, these, these, uh, six lots will, will go in. That's, that's great, but Adam still owns more property in north of us and that will likely be developed as well. It's my anticipation. That would be in his best interest to develop that property. That's going to create a denser neighborhood. That's going to bring more houses out there. It's going to look, look a lot more like, my anticipation would look a lot more like the area north of Walmart, which then has significant dust issues and may also have a lot of drainage issues. Now, I don't know about what's below the block. I mean, it is cattails and it's wet and I don't, I'm old enough, I don't go down. But if we take the water to the southeast corner and then drop it down the 470th ditch, the property owner on 1A, excuse me, 1B, or it's 1A, um, the greens. Every spring, the greens, um, have to horrible drive out of their driveway because the ditch can't handle, their, their front yard becomes a retention pond. As it is today, that, that's, that's that problem that they have. They don't want to make this work. And so the, what I want to impress upon you nice people is that the water issues are a significant concern for us and, and our lifestyle, our, our ability to enjoy the properties. Question, were you in three and four or four and five? Three and four, so I have, uh, my house at a Morton building and then, uh, four is an empty lot. We use that as, as green space and habitat.
I'm going to ask the question. It has nothing to do with the rezone, but if 470th has been such a problem for the landlords out there, why haven't you guys addressed this?
Very cooperative. Didn't have the money. I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I, I get it. It's, it's, it's a tough world. And we're just, we're five houses and we're not the, we're not the noisiest.
Well, I mean, it's not going to be on the township to maintain that ditch because that's unproblem. I mean.
Yeah, it's interesting that, that would be an interesting discussion with township because we've gotten in trouble to maintain that.
Well, it is the right of way, but you technically own it.
Yeah, I, I'm not arguing with you.
But I mean, you compete with it.
You just can't walk in.
They would have to allow you to own your own property. I, I, yeah, I'm proud of that too. But I don't see why they would have a problem if you, if the landlord says.
I, I agree with you. But that's not.
Well, I'll go to that township.
It sounds like you're running for township for next year.
This would not only be Fairview, but also.
Well, the ditch they're talking about would be a hundred percent.
It's Fairview. West side of the road. Yeah, we're on Fairview and we, we're right on the corner of Fairview. So just north of this changes to the next township that I'm calling.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's the problem with living on the line with two townships. And the ditch and well, well, the county doesn't have much to do here other than this reason.
Yeah.
But when it comes to the ditch, Fairview would have, say, on the west side. The other township has, say, on the east side, which is Union County, um, the speed limit sign, you would have to, and they would have to agree with each other, but usually who maintains it? Because they split up the miles on the border between two townships. So whoever's maintaining it would have to say over the speed limit sign. So, yeah, I mean, the rules are drawn up, so you throw your hands up and walk away. But there is a process. There is a way.
There's a process. I understand.
But the, the, the drainage part on 470th, that should be easily addressed.
Other questions?
Anyone else?
There you go. Um, wishes. Thoughts, comments?
So my thoughts are at this time, I feel comfortable moving into a second reading. Make a motion in that. Thank.
What, do you know, when you, you remember the second reading?
You won every next meeting y'all want. So we can either do it next week or.
October 7th. Yeah, I think October 7th is too big.
Either do that or.
I'll say that.
For which.
Either is fine.
130.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor, say aye. Aye, close sign, sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Michael. No, well, I'm, um, actually. But, um, I'm working on my turnaround. So hopefully by next year. I mean. There's more than you.
Gotcha. And work well. That was you. Trying to.
I believe Terry's sound did out, but the emergency operations plan. Uh, apparently at some point in time, the state found somebody who didn't actually update it every year. So now they need minutes. So we guys are approving set plan each year. So it has been updated. All the agencies responsible for their portions of that have the opportunity to update as they see. Just asking, you're accepted as the plan and being as there is confidential information, please don't distribute. And we do approve both of emergency operations plan. Put motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close sign, sign. Motion passes. So you just need minutes.
Yeah, I just need minutes.
Right, thank you. Scott?
Best control from jail. All right, same here. Crestal X, they're currently. Dust control here and then in the safety center here. So one is for the exterior, one is for the interior. Exterior 1,040 here, interior is 1,0364. Are the signature, your title.
Is that, yes, the one. But we're taking motions to sever this contract.
I moved to accept the present license contract.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close sign, sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Let's ditch board, so he might come up. So I'll undertake a motion going to ditch board. A motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in ditch board. So you got contracts for later construction.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Then we got a contract.
That was the, just so I'm keep track of these, right, that we even one was the one that we had bids that were like ten times. Got them out in the same file, they got it done, they did a good job, they're in a pod, this is just progress. Okay, this is just, you know, this gets captured, thank you. But it's going along okay, I mean, I don't know, you think uh. This is just initial, gotcha. Well then, fingers crossed.
Then we have one for all time. I'm motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Anything else for ditch board? Hearing uh, I want to hear a motion. A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes, we're in another session. Brent, we've got a right of way application from Midco on three hundred and eighth streets.
We're going to leave there and then go down to the west.
We'll approve the application.
Second.
A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Do you have something for me to sign? Then we got fuel, folks.
Fallen oil wanted uh two thirty eight. Need to approve fallen oil bid.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
That was great. Construction showed up and they took out that bridge. On uh one seven, the bridge number one thirty three oh seventy and oh eighty eight oh seventy. Uh they have all of them out and did really job everything much when he gets. Uh they did design work to have a great thing, I think this would be nice.
What was the company on that?
So capital, so capital.
Oh, we we um, we put it on the agenda, right now we have a contract that was signed back in twenty seventeen. We were holding for like a calendar regularly and the boarding rate on that is seventy dollars. Right now, we're working with Union County at a rate of eighty dollars, Yankee County Sheriff's two hundred and seven, I believe, but Minnehaha County's just. Uh I spoke to Lincoln County Sheriff. Uh he liked the board with us and our new jail and uh I discussed a rate with him. To him, the tipping point is about ninety, if we go over ninety, then it's not worth the drive for him. Just supposed to stay in Minnehaha County. Uh so, yeah, but my recommendation is that we, for one, at least end up uh January one with the contract. Short term, and we can for the rest of this year, we can either. Continue our contract rate of seventy dollars throughout the rest of this year. Or we can change it right now, it's up to you guys. What's easier? Well, you know. It it might be an an advantage to us to essentially honor that co- existing contract, give them. The opportunity to plan for the the rate at on January one, which in essence gives them an introductory offer. Of of seventy dollars a day, uh significant savings for them, encouraging them to make use of us. In favor of um their inmates in Minnehaha County and uh hopefully build a good relationship for their. For more than anything, so I have been in communication with the Martian Service about how the federal holds in our jail. I'll I'll pay, you know, the inmates I can get. Ideally, we wanna hold a population of the neighborhood forty, we don't have that many of our own and and uh we can. If we can rent those beds up to that rate, it's a good thing for for the county and it's good, it kinda makes the jail operate more efficiently. We can hold that number. And um. So I'm not confident we're gonna fill up with maybe counting rates to that rate, like he has a contract now with Minnehaha County. I think forty or forty five uh beds, whether he needs them or not. A few months ago, when I spoke to him, he was operating at over sixty inmates a day. And so he thought he could bring us some um state Lincoln County's money, create space for Minnehaha County. Right now, he's right at that forty five, so he's not gonna bring us twenty, but we can get right away. So I think it's a matter of trying to encourage that relationship. I don't think that. It would be a bad thing for us to just honor the existing contract throughout the, throughout the rest of this year and let them. Get them noticed now with it being uh coming on August, it'll be ninety days notice. A rate of go up to ninety dollars as of January one. Update our contract and have them signing between now and January.
I agree with that, seventy is better than zero.
Well, it gets them in here, man, this works nice, let's just say.
Once they, once they start doing business with us, they see how well we serve them and they use us, obviously, they're not gonna. Uh they're not going to bring us inmates that brings them a little bit of forty five, personally. Their intention is to bring us inmates that uh they'll have transport record.
And then they'll see why we're asking twenty dollars more. Big building out there.
Do uh do we need motions to set these rates or just the consensus?
Well, generally speaking, uh our rates, we often do that uh January one every year, we'll make generally motions for that. This is already in place, right, but.
Yeah, there's a seventy dollar rate in place, we have a contract, contract is written to where it it renews unless it's changed. So we have a contract with them for seventy dollars right now. But you can communicate to them that we had this discussion and that that is where it's a fair rate to be.
We can just set the rate now, draft a new contract, send it to where we pick up that January one, we don't have to deal with that. Um then we can set our our rate and I'll recommend that it's January one, put our rate across the board, seventy dollars per county. Well, Turner County's gonna fall into the same situation, so probably. At the same time, they have a contract with us for seventy dollars a day as well. I kinda like that, especially since they do have kinda this breaking point in their mind, if you can give them some confidence that we're not gonna. Suddenly say, actually, we want to go one oh five or something. Yeah, even even mentioning uh, you know, five dollars, well, for them. You know, if they're bringing us twenty inmates, if they if they were to go back sixty. That's a hundred dollars a day, every day, that it makes a difference for them.
One free inmate.
What's that?
One free inmate.
So I guess I'd recommend that if we did that. Continue our our current contract to the year end and 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 let them know now that we don't change thirty. Ninety dollars first year and then this first year we change our rate from eighty to ninety for all other counties. Let me make a motion that we keep the rate at seventy for Turner until the end of the year and then let them know that we're moving to ninety as of January first. Second.
A motion in a second, any further discussion?
Do we need that specifically for Turner and Lincoln or is it across the board?
Well, I, yeah, the reason I mention those two is those are the two, we have contracts, but. Other counties, like if somebody needs a bed and we help for them, we just have, we just have a boarding rate. And you guys generally set that first year. And uh but we don't have contracts moving to other counties, that's just our out of county rate, those two counties, we just have a contract so they can budget for it.
Is our out of contract forty one the same?
Um, right now, it's eighty and seventy for these two counties. And I suggest that as of January one, we can bring everybody. Well, I guess there's no harm generally to do that in January one, but if you wanna make that effective or or as of January one, everybody goes to ninety or.
We can do that then, I mean, we're just talking about contracts. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Contract of the, contract amended, wanna do with you guys, future meeting for signing. Do I have anything else? Just that employee, what was the deal with the employee part?
Um, so the payroll spreadsheet that you guys will approve for next year, Andy and I just forgot about that part time position that you've already, you know. About to go ahead and budget for, so it was just a matter of hearing that.
Literally on my way to work today. Think about that person, it doesn't matter name yet.
So I just added that one line to the spreadsheet, I sent that out to you guys this morning.
So is that the item that's in the budget, but it's not in the spreadsheet?
Yeah, but I have the original spreadsheet that I sent you, so I just have the updated this morning.
So this one's updated, that should be.
Yeah.
So, everybody can see vouchers, maybe? I want to take a motion. Second, a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Now we've got the adoption of the twenty twenty six annual budget.
This is unchanged from their previous reading, correct?
Correct, except I did add in the B C B C campaign, we talked about that, I think, at the last meeting, so that is added in there.
I move to approve the uh. Twenty twenty six annual budget.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Adopt twenty twenty six payroll. Everybody seen it, I move to adopt the twenty twenty six payroll. Second, a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Resolution for closure of courthouse for employees to attend the written cutting of the new jail and all L E C.
Our um employees have all really expressed an interest in being able to go to that. We closed for the groundbreaking um back when that happened and so. With uh, you know, with the new for a resolution for this, I just wrote one up and. You know, it suggested that three thirty be a good time for that, so that they can all get out there by four o'clock. And if someone doesn't want to go and they wanna stay around and keep the office open, I mean, that would be fine too, but. At least this would give them an opportunity to attend if they want to.
Along with that, do we need to say that there will be potentially a forum of? Mission or something?
Yeah, I also thought.
But if we're gonna close, we have to close. We're gonna do a resolution, close the courthouse, we can't leave somebody behind just to. Stay here. When it's closed, it's closed, right?
That makes sense to me as well.
So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five, twenty five. Second, another motion in a second, any further discussion? Local.
My player.
Yes.
Pray low.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes. Yes. Motion passes. Brandon. And so sunny and sixty seven. Everybody get to see the monthly department then, our department things.
I think I am interested in getting a Mark Nuns version of that. The library just sent me what they send and I put it all in there, um I don't know if some of those things.
You know, sometimes I read the whole dang thing. But not always.
What if you put them in this different email?
Okay.
So they don't. Fill make the agenda.
Yeah, that we have, we. We can do that, right?
It's it's not something that they hold on, it's just something that they receive as information.
If you send it out, it'll be available. But it doesn't have to be inside the packet.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, anything for your commentary, folks? Um, I have one item, um so we uh, we had had some discussions about uh potentially changed uh. Well, a changed hunting and trapping policy at the park, um we received some public input, we revisited the question, talked to game vision parks more. Um and uh we don't yet have a contract finalized, but the the plan is to uh. To enter into a chat uh contract with game vision parks. Which would specifically allow um pheasant and deer hunting archery only. Um in the portions and some of the portions of the park owned by the county. So so none of these policies have anything, there was some misunderstanding about that, none of them had to do with the portion of the park, it's all by the state, it's just the county owned ground. Um and we are still working on finalizing details, outlining um precise number of hunters, uh we're close to that. But I'll bring the, I'll bring the bio. But I think it's a good balance, uh it provides some really good liability protection while also generating some income for the park. Um and uh we'll, there was consensus that trapping is not appropriate with all the um, you know, kids running in the woods and and people running. Bringing dogs out there and things like that, so. Uh so so trapping would continue to not be allowed, um uh hunting firearms would not be allowed and just. And it also would allow us to utilize um our conservation officer to enforce some of the issues that we've had, so. You would require field testing offsite, you know, and that'd be something where we could call a conservation officer. We're also having some issues with people leaving uh leaving tree stands up and possibly abandoning them, and and so this would give us some. A formal season that the tree stands would be allowed to be out there and they would have to be uh have to be marked and. Again, if we had any issues with that, we'd be able to call the conservation officers to. Game Vision Parks made a really good, a really good case for for what seems like a really good program and I encourage other landlords to the county. And I encourage other landlords, uh, the county to look into it, it's a, it's a nice way to kind of balance, um, increasing hunting access in the county, because you really have, you know, all sources that, that I talked to that are knowledgeable about hunting. Report that we particularly have some issues with public hunting ground, just a lack of the dirt of public hunting ground in Dupree County. So it seemed important to us to, to retain, uh, this little bit of public ground, as long as we can do it in a way to balance. So that, that has to come here in the contract. Uh, so that will be under, that will be within the park boards, uh, per view, you know, through our lease, uh, that would be an additional portion of that.
If you sign a contract on our ground, we have to do it.
So that, that contract would be, would be the, the usage of the property, which is, which is grant specific, uh?
Yes, but when you sign it, if we take it away from you, then we'll beholden to it, so you can't put a contract on ground you don't own.
So I'll revisit that with, with Michael and we can, we can have further discussions about extension of our contract, but I expected something, so we assume the landlord has to sign. Depending on how the contract reads. So then I need to look at the contract and interpret it. And certainly, if this body had, had concerns about that, I mean, I think that that would be something.
I just want the proper, done properly.
Yeah, having, because if we're gonna be beholden to it, I would assume the landlord should have say, oh, and I don't think there's anything in there that. Essentially, that, you know, the, the beholdenness would be that, um, we'd be receiving, uh, we'd be receiving funds for it. That, uh, if we were to exit the contract at any time, we'd need to return to Game Vision Parks. So, uh, you know, at this point, the park board managing, the park board's own finances would be responsible for holding those funds in reserve, as long as they have any concerns about whether we're gonna fill up for five years. If not, if the county can make sure that they're, um, prepared to, uh, you know, be ready to, to step up and make Game Vision Parks back, they're more than I can. So at this point, I think another reason why it's a.
Oh, just fine, because then, I mean, the other, the other issue is if you, if you were to disband for some reason, and the county's on the hook, we should have the say over who, what contracts were signed.
Yeah, I think if we were to disband, the, the park board would feel about that.
So really wouldn't, because it's our ground, they'd just be disbanded.
But that contract, but we, we should visit and, you know, just look carefully at the lease, make sure, I mean, I think that we're all on the same page, we have the right answer to be signing this and.
Yeah. I mean, park board's still gonna give them, I understand that, but who signs it, just so everybody's aware?
Yeah. Building project updates. So open house next Tuesday, four oh seven, I believe. At the new law enforcement, is there any building project updates for here?
I have received a document from the construction, um, uh, regarding like the contract terms, we're starting to kind of reel down the scope of the work. Um, my hope is that I have that time adequately reviewed in anticipation of our Thursday meeting. Um, we expect and hope that next week, we'll be ready to come in, um, and give, uh, some of the presentation of an understanding of the scope of the work and the budget. Um, and then, uh, pursuant to laws and we're working with the committee, we will also bring you a recommendation, but that recommendation must be paid for to follow. So my hope is that by the fourteenth, um, rain at the fourteenth, the meeting and the sitting that can be made by this board, um, to be forward with that project based upon the presentation by Lloyd and the recommendation of the committee, uh, next week. And then if there's still anything at, beginning work on this side of this, uh, the lead of, uh, so, park and state, um, anticipation is gonna be that work starts here primarily or actually exclusively in this building after long-term vacation, the trash vacates. Uh, and then working the courthouse will, um, commence either in December or January, we gotta schedule that around court. Um, so we work with, um, the courts as well as the Floyd and their subs to figure out how to be efficient in those spaces. Obviously, here, once the dentisary has been vacated, it's gonna be a lot easier to get work done, um, and also it's not gonna be nearly as, uh, as important to be timed, so this will be up and over, okay? So, um, well, I think we're right, kind of on the edge, hopefully, um, this body's getting any good information from what you come today.
So when they do start construction here, we will be having our meetings at the end of the first day, so. You're liking him, I know.
I just want to chime in that you mentioned the open house next week, I just want to make clear that we will not be operational at that time, at that building. We're doing the open house prior to being operational, so, I mean, once we move in, we won't be doing tours like that. So we're doing it before we're ready, we actually won't occupy coming next, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll put signage here and there and people, like, the, the building, hopefully, in turn, directly back this way. Vice versa, when we lock up here, hopefully, we'll let, make signs on the door and let people over at ours.
So during the tour, you may see little things, that you're gonna go out there and leave it like that. There'll be, there'll be touch-ups all the way until, yeah, three weeks after, and he takes something.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be touch-up for a while, but, um, we'll be out for this.
So, uh, one question that I, I had was, um, you know, especially as I thought through that, oh yeah, there's no more public tours after, after this event, so I was curious about what sort of publicity, you received a card in the mail that was great, you shared an invite with me, I sent it out to all the, uh, the auditors of the southeast district, the county commissioners, because of the last district meeting, there was just a lot of interest in it, a few guys were saying it was asking. Um, so, uh, who, who, have we spread the word through B C B C or reached out to all of our, certainly all of our, who I just produced, that was their, that was their, the B C B C card.
Yeah, B C B C offered to ram around the event, like, my mother, so they're taking care of that, and they, they put together lists, and I gave them lists of various committees and commissioners. Awesome, and they sent that out, outside of that, you know, I, they got this post and then we publicized it on Facebook, their Facebook, and Facebook, I think, I don't know, appears to on conversation, but I think I saw it. But then Lacy with Beckenhour, yeah, Beckenhour's the hero of PR, you know, too definitely, that's great, and you should be out there, people missed it, so. Yeah, you're not gonna get it.
No.
And, uh, but yeah, I'm kind of glad people tell me that you were out of town that day, and you're touring, tour, tour takes a good hour for time to.
You can give a list of infractions, I'll get them.
Yeah. Into the tour.
Yeah. Do jurisdiction, anything yet?
We've got, uh, J J Z, uh, top plan, we need November ten. We've redone, you know, some, thank you for the, for the plan.
Come back, um, so for the, for the J J Z, um, where they and I had down, compiled some stuff and then we're gonna, uh, have one more small meeting just to hammer out the maps. Uh, before presenting it to the, uh, planning, so we can be joined, of course. So, but I think you did make some of that way, the map is just gonna be the, the thing we're gonna be discussing more.
Been some good changes in there.
Yeah.
The things that people.
Yeah. I, I, I think it works in favor of both, because, like, knowing Rose and County are unhappy about.
Got rid of some of the issues that we had before. So, wonderful.
Good collaboration.
Yep.
Yeah, conversations.
Yeah, that's great.
Any other questions about it?
Excited to see you, the, you know?
Yeah, I'm excited. That's where, that's where just.
Other commissioner reports?
Uh, we had a meeting, uh, with, uh, kind of, we need development company and, uh, they got a couple names that they're working on. Um, so getting closer to the governor's house, they're working on having a, a light and sign up by their fire department, so they'll, you know, kind of, both community events, that should be coming on the board too, I may just, maybe on, I'll have to stay, right? And, uh, they're doing a business mixer and on February eighth night, I believe, whatever that month is, so, yeah, they're working on a, a business mixer of all the people who kind of just kind of eat and talk about things and try to, try to get more things going, uh. And you know that one building downtown was sold and they're, or, you know, having a, a small business, okay, but at least it's a business and it's kind of nice to see some things starting to happen in, by the, for a long time.
Don't lay into this letter of support from fair, did they get that?
Thank you, they got it.
Any other commissioner reports? Hearing none, do we need executive session?
Yes, from legal, uh, one twenty-five, two subset from three.
Mike, was there something contractual too? I'm going to go in.
I don't believe so.
Uh, uh. Yes.
Yeah.
We, we gave you the update last week, right? We do contractual stuff.
Well, we talked the other day, I thought.
Yep.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. And that would be. And actually, it's still gonna be three. But before we go over to the test, see there's two, so you guys are C C O R, are you guys here for, uh? Exec, yes. No, are they good, what are you going to executive session? For, for legal and contractual. So I got everybody by two steps, then, yeah. So I have a motion, to the, who motion, who made the motion?
Dave.
Dave made motion, who says it? Jeffrey did.
I did.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, we're in regular session. Want to, Mike, you want to go get the work? Are we recording?
Mm-hmm.
Now I'll entertain a motion for one of the second session, so.
Say again.
A motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, we're in regular session.
Move to her.
Say it, a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, we're adjourned, thank you.